Welcome. This evening, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Twinsburg Board of Education. Today is November fifteenth and the time is 7:03. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to see the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe that there are any changes to the agenda or any items, so I'll move forward with communications on the board president's report. Good evening and welcome, families of, families and staff of Wilcox Primary School, George G. Dodge Intermediate School, Twinsburg High School, administrative staff, and other residents of the Twinsburg community. I'm Mark Curtis and it's my privilege to be your board president. Colder weather has begun to settle in and it seems that the regular ailments of flu and other bugs are beginning to rear its ugly head. Fear not, Thanksgiving is right around the corner and as you know, contrary to what doctors may say, feeding a cold is the most tried and true cure. Now, I'm sure that there will be plenty of turkey and stuffing for all to enjoy and along with some, with a healthy dose of football, so for all of those looking forward to the holidays, which I am, happy, happy Thanksgiving. The Board of Education has just returned from attending the statewide Capitol Conference sponsored by the Ohio School Boards Association. This annual conference is attended by every school district in the state and offers school board members, as well as a number of administrators and superintendents, an opportunity to receive professional development in many areas. Additionally, we're able to learn of the challenges that other districts similar to ours face and how they deal with them, as well as any innovations that may being, that are being implemented. We also receive legislative updates on school finance and accountability from elected officials in both the State House and Senate. We will continue our efforts in actively lobbying for change in these areas. As always, we will continue to keep the community at rest as changes occur. I would also like to acknowledge the impending retirements of Mr. Robert Pacey with twenty-nine years of service, Pacey?
Yes.
Pacey. With twenty-nine years of service to the district and Mrs. Louise Torango with twelve years of service to the district. Your commitment to the children of this district is truly appreciated. You have had a profound impact on our district and your presence will be truly missed. Finally, I would like to offer a comment on the recent storm that's had a major impact on our community and our school district. Roads were blocked and down trees, by down trees and debris, homes and businesses sustained damage, power lines were down, and many were without electricity for days, myself included. As you know, due to these issues, our district was forced to close as well. And during this time, many employees within the district stepped up in a major way to assess damage and provide assistance in getting operations up and running, allowing the district to recover and continue educating our students. I would like to acknowledge our custodial staff, grounds crew, food services, transportation, administrative assistants, administrative staff, and many others for all of your hard work and commitment. I would also like to thank the city for their safe, and their safety supporters, and their safety forces for their coordination and collaboration. Whenever there's adversity, our community seems to pull together for, for the good of all and for that I am truly thankful. This concludes my president's report and I will now turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers, our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, everyone. We have a packed house again and lots of students to celebrate, so guys, we're going to get to you in just a few minutes. We have a couple of other announcements to make first. At Board of Education, just over a week ago, I was in Hebron for the state's cross-country meet and we were so very proud that Emily O'Connor and Ryan Atkins from our high school represented our high school and our school district so very well. Emily came in eighty-sixth in Ohio and Ryan came in twenty-fourth and earned all Ohio honors, so it was just a great day. We had a number of our athletes there supporting Ryan and Emily and it was just an outstanding opportunity just to see some of the very finest and fastest long-distance runners in Ohio, so congratulations again to Emily and Ryan. Board of Education, last week, our school district paused to thank our veterans by hosting a number of programs which celebrated them and thanked them for the service to our country. I just want to thank our staff and our students. They really did a fantastic job of putting together programs and celebrating and thanking the members of our community who have given back through their service in the armed forces or in local law enforcement, so we thank our students and our staff for once again this year, doing us all proud by all the efforts that you provided and all the wonderful ways that you welcomed back our veterans last week. Just a commercial announcement, our Twinsburg High School Drama Club will present the desk set tomorrow, November sixteenth, at three-thirty and then on Friday and Saturday of this weekend at seven o'clock and the play will be presented over at the auditorium at Twinsburg High School. Tickets are seven dollars for adults and five dollars for senior citizens and students and we hope that you can come out and support these wonderful students and their director and that is Ms. Bennett, who have done just a fantastic job of sets and costumes and scenery and the whole thing, so we wish them well and we hope that they break a leg, one and all. As I mentioned, Board of Education at the last meeting and as Mr. Curtis just mentioned, there's a lot of activity right now happening at the State House and Senate Bill two sixteen is one of those bills that educators and those who support education need to pay attention to and make sure that you're reaching out to our legislators. This is a very important bill. It will address such things as teacher evaluations, gifted education, state assessments, educator licensure, and preschool education amongst other things, and so I encourage our parents and our, our teachers, our classified members of our staff to stay tuned to Senate Bill two sixteen and offer your feedback to Christina Rogner and Frank LaRose because they are at the State House and they are our voice piece and it's very important that you're actively engaged in these advocacy efforts on part of our, our students, our staff, and our school community. Board of Education, this is a reminder that the next time that we meet will be on December thirteenth. It's an odd date. It is actually the second Wednesday in December. In December, we only have one meeting of the Board of Education as its regular meeting and it will be held at seven o'clock PM over at the high school in the large group instruction room, so it takes a break from tradition and it is the only meeting that we will have in December as far as a regular Board of Education meeting goes. And then finally, with Thanksgiving just around the corner, this is just a reminder that our students are planning so many holiday programs and events, please make sure that you pay attention to the district website because that's where you will find the most up-to-date information about a multitude of programs that will occur between this week and straight through, up until, I should say, winter break, which is, it'll be around here before you can blink your eye. So without further ado, we'd like to ask Ms. Villa and Mr. Asti from Wilcox Primary School to please come forward. I know we have a lot of wonderful students to celebrate this evening and welcome to the both of you.
Is that appropriate, Mrs. Powers? Thank you, Mrs. Powers. We absolutely do have some wonderful students to recognize tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Asti, he's going to read class, and I get the pleasure of bringing all of you up here.
Thank you, Superintendent Powers, Board of Education, community. Every month, we have the distinct opportunity to recognize publicly some of the most outstanding students at Wilcox and these students are awarded the Wilcox Rocks because of the award. And these students stand out to the homeroom teachers for being kind, caring, responsible, and respectful to other students and stand out and just going above and beyond what's expected in the classroom. And part of that to help them, because it is kindergarten, first grade, is we recognize the teachers as well for being wonderful and making them wonderful, as well as the parents. So, I'm going to call the student's name and the teacher and if they could both come on up to receive their recognition. Evan Mannion in Mrs. Ferello's class, come on up. Mrs. Ferello says that Evan is a perfect nominee for the Student of the Month. He is a go-getter and loves to learn new material. He does a great job making connections to his real-life experiences to what we're learning in class. He's a great role model, showing others what to do and how to be kind to one another. And then Evan says that Mrs. Ferello makes her students feel happy. She is nice, always smiling and helpful. She has helped Evan whenever the zipper on his bag is stuck. In math, she teaches her students subtraction by showing them how to do it on the smartboard. Mrs. Ferello rocks. Next up is Gwyneth Freyse in Mrs. Salero's class, come on up. Mrs. Salero writes that Gwyneth rocks because she's an excellent example of a first grader. She works hard every day to do her best work. She is kind and respectful to her friends and teachers and always has that smile on her face. She is one of the reasons Mrs. Salero loves her job. And she says that Mrs. Salero is always nice and helpful. She helps her students learn how to add doubles, like eight plus eight equals sixteen, as well as teach them subtraction by using a number line. She helps her students by writing out, writing it out on the board and showing them how to do it. Mrs. Salero rocks. Our next student is Catalina Hunter in Mr. Salero's class. Catalina wasn't able to be with us, but Mr. Salero said that there are many reasons why she deserves this award and she works hard and comes to school prepared to do her best. She is an excellent friend and helpful to her peers and teachers. And she said that Mr. Salero is a good teacher because he helps his students learn and makes learning fun. He is always asking his students questioning, questions and gives them ways to solve their problems. He helped Catalina add math problems with three numbers and now she's a good reader. Our next student is Manning Howard in Mrs. Nisely's class. Mrs. Nisely says that Manning is a great student because he always comes to school ready to learn something new each day. He is kind to others and an amazing role model. He has such a curiosity about his learning and is always asking questions. Mrs. Nisely is lucky to have him in our classroom because he makes teaching such an awesome adventure each day. And he said that Mrs. Nisely rocks because she is a nice teacher who does fun stuff that other teachers don't, like play games, have morning meetings, and do brag tags. In math, Mrs. Nisely has helped Manning get the right answer by reminding him to use the number line. Manning says that Mrs., Manning says to Mrs. Nisely, "You're an awesome teacher and I want to be with you for the rest of my life." Our next student is Trevion McCovry in Mrs. Petresh's class. Trevion rocks Wilcox. He is a kind and caring classmate and is always willing to help a friend in need. He always uses his manners and is very polite and he tries to do his best, which has been a change lately due to his broken arm. And he just actually had his cast off, what, today? Yeah, just this morning, so he's working that back. Yeah. But he's tried so hard, even with that broken arm, and Mrs. Petresh is proud of him. And he said that Mrs. Petresh is special because she always has her students do fun projects and activities based around the stories they read in class. Mrs. Petresh is always helpful, especially when she helps Trevion zip and unzip his coat and bookbag. Mrs. Petresh rocks. And our final student is Gianna Caserta in Mrs. Ione's class, come on up. Mrs. Ione is so happy and honored to nominate Gianna Caserta for the Wilcox Rocks Because of Me Award. Each day, Gianna comes to school ready to learn with a smile on her face. She is always so polite and kind to other students. Once, another student was having a hard day and Gianna helped a student and talked to him when he was feeling sad. She is a very hard worker and tries her best in all areas of school and Mrs. Ione is pleased to nominate her as the Wilcox Rocks nominee. And she said, oh, that Mrs. Ione is a good teacher because she is nice and kind. She always smiles, gives hugs, and doesn't yell. Mrs. Ione always shows us what to do by putting it up on the smartboard. Mrs. Ione rocks because she is a really nice teacher. Boys and girls and teachers, if I could have you guys hold up your certificates right in front of your, right in front of your tummy, hold it up nice and proud and smile, looking out to the audience. It's a photo op for Mom and Dad, Grandma and Grandpa. Make sure you're smiling, looking straight out, not over at me because I'm talking. That's confusing, I know. Mrs. Nisely, you too? One more, please. Excellent, one more round of applause for our Wilcox Rocks certificate. Thank you, boys and girls. Go on, have a seat, and next up is Dodge this evening.
So, we are, again, excited about being here this evening because we, as always, we are trying to nurture that leadership role in our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students. And so, once again, we're going to have our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade Student Council introduce the Students of the Month this year. Did need to take just a second, though, because we have a lot of exciting things going on at Dodge and I was really excited and pleased with our father-daughter dance for the school year. And as I look around our audience here, I can see many fathers that joined us. It was, once again, our third annual father-daughter dance was a tremendous success. As we continue to have standing room only at our dances and the opportunity to see our fathers and their daughters just spend some quality time together and really enjoy each other's company. And so, once again, we had a really great turnout for our father-daughter dance. I need to take a second to make sure that we thank our fathers and our daughters for participating in this year's event. But Moms, don't think we forgot about you because we are now quickly approaching our Mother-Son event and we are going to be looking at something that's going to be a lot of fun and, I can't think of the name of it, I'm losing it, at the opportunity, so they're out at the Sky Zone, thank you very much. And so, there's going to be a really neat opportunity, so I'm going to ask Moms to make sure they got some comfortable shoes on, some comfortable pants, and join us out for our Mother-Son event because it's another opportunity, again, to make sure that we have some opportunities for our mothers and our sons to bond together and just share in each other's company, come together as a community, and it's just a really exciting time. I did also want to make sure that you knew that coming up next week, we are really excited for our invention convention league and this is an opportunity for our students to really explore science. And this year, we have a really large focus on our science and we're doing some really exciting things. And so, as your students come home, they will see some different things in sixth grade, looking at different ways to explore science, different ways to express themselves, to do some real hands-on opportunities, so we're excited about the things coming on next week in sixth grade. And last but not least, I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to congratulate or celebrate all of our students who wrote letters to our veterans for Veterans Day. We sent over seven hundred letters to our, to our troops and to our veterans and so we're really excited. We're over, students from every grade level, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade had an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of our veterans, the commitment that they have made to make our great country safe, and so really excited about that. And if you would join me, just applauding our students and staff. And so, quick, very shortly, you'll hear some things that are going on in the future, but those are some of the things that we've been working on so far. So at this time, I'd like to trade, share the mic with Ms. Walker.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce, like Mr. Holland said, we have some Student Council members here that are going to take some leadership roles and introduce our Students of the Month. So Julia, would you like to start?
Good evening. My name is Julia Adamoski. Character counts at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. The following students were selected by their teachers at Dodge because they have represented and exemplified the qualities of outstanding leadership, citizenship, academic performance and efforts, social skills, and overall accomplishments.
Good evening. My name is Jayden Die. The character word for fourth grade students for this quarter is respect. Respect means that we follow the golden rule, are tolerant of differences, use good manners and not poor language, are considerate of the feelings of others, do not threaten, hit, or hurt anyone, and deal with peace, and deal peacefully with anger, insults, and disagreements. From Ms. McCar, from Ms. McArthur and Mrs. Palmer's fourth grade classes, the Students
Good evening. My name is Caroline Bascelli. The character word for fifth grade students for this quarter is caring. Caring means that one is kind, compassionate, and protective. It means that one expresses gratitude, forgiveness, forgives others, and helps people in need. Caring students are also charitable and selfless. From Ms. Xerox and Maiten's fifth grade classes, the Students of the Month are Hayden Couch
Good evening. My name is Jordan Miles. The character word for the sixth grade students of the, students for this quarter is citizenship. Being a good citizen means you do your share to make your stu, your school and community better. You cooperate and you keep, you get involved in your community affairs. You stay informed, vote, you are a good neighbor, you obey laws and rules, you respect authority, you protect the environment, and you volunteer in the school community and community at large. From Ms. Haas and Ms. Fanning's sixth grade class, classes, the Students of the Month
I would like to provide you with an update on the many projects and initiative, initiatives that, that we were working on as Student Council at George D. Dodge Intermediate School. We have a camp food drive coming up from December fourth to December fifteenth to support families in need during the holidays. We are also starting a new program called Capture Kindness. This will be an activity promoting fourteen weeks of random acts of kindness. It is going to be a great and exciting couple of weeks before winter break.
Let's give our students another round of applause. Parents, this is now your time to get those great photo ops. Students, hold your awards in front of you, including our, our Student Council. You can leave your papers down and get big smiles, please. Students, thank you very much. We're very proud of you. You may join your families. I am so lucky to be an employee here in Twinsburg and work with students at Dodge. And in addition to working with them, I think I work and know I work with a fabulous staff. Now, each month, our staff members are recognized as top Tigers. And the administrative team, we, we really try to stay out of the nominations. This is something that our staff members are in charge of and there's nothing more special than being recognized by your colleagues. But this month, when these two nominees came across our desk, we, I know I was just ecstatic because finally, I'm looking at these two teachers and I said, you know, I'm happy that our colleagues or their colleagues and the staff recognize the hard work that we see each and every day. So the first person I want to recognize is Mrs. Magnus, one of our fourth grade teachers. Mrs. Magnus was nominated by Ms. McQ, another one of our fourth grade teachers and team leaders. For Mrs. Magnus, I'm being a team player and I must admit, I'm going off script a little bit. The teachers who nominate usually write a lovely paragraph or so about this teacher, but I must say about Mrs. Magnus is, we've been here for three years or two and she has been a quiet, quiet support. She is an advocate for her students. Those little things that you don't think about, she thinks about in them. We see it each and every day. She goes about her way, does not make waves, tries to stay quiet in the background and just do what she knows is best for kids. One of the things that I will say to Mrs. Magnus is I enjoy working with her, we all do, and I'm looking forward to her continuing her leadership at Dodge, so great job. And another one of those quiet teachers that work hard every day and that's diligent, will never say a word, works hard behind the scenes, is Mrs. Bush. Mrs. Bush is a fifth grade teacher at Dodge and I call her one of our, our reading specialists, although she doesn't have that title, but what you see, that she works with students each and every day in reading is absolutely amazing. She was nominated by Kelly Robertson, our school psychologist, because of her work and stepping in to help with the student. But what many don't know is I see that every day with Mrs. Bush and how she works with her kids, how she reaches out to them, how she interacts with them, how she takes the time to go to extra step to know them, learn them, and work with them. She truly is a great asset to our building. I truly enjoy working with you and we're very proud of you and we're very proud of Mrs. Magnus. Congratulations.
Just as we prepare to welcome the high school up, I did want to take a second to just have all of our teachers from Dodge to take a stand for a second. They're here celebrating not only your kids, but each other, so Dodge teachers, could you stand up to be recognized?
Don't hide.
And then, last but not least, I'm going to put one other group on the spot and ask all of our Dodge parents to take a stand. We really appreciate you taking the time to come out and help us celebrate your kids. We could not do what we do without you. Can I have all our Dodge parents to stand for a moment? Thank you for, again, for all you do to help us do what we do. At this time, I do want to welcome the administrative team from the high school up to the mic.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Torango, principal of the high school, and this is Mr. Solan, assistant principal. Thanks for coming. Tonight, we're here- Thanks for coming. Tonight, we're here to honor and to recognize our Tiger Strong students of the month. We have, starting from 9th graders all the way to 12th graders. So I'd like to start, and if Mr. Solan can read a little bit about our first student.
Our first student for the Tiger Strong student of the month is Rondir Maltoni, 9th grader. Mr. Maltoni was recognized by Mr. Cockburner. Mr. Cockburner says, "Rondir does an outstanding job in the classroom. He has had a seamless transition from the middle school into high school. He leads by example in the classroom and works hard. When he has questions, he asks them, and he does an excellent job participating and leading the classroom and whole group discussion." He couldn't make it this evening. Our next student is 9th grader Jeff Romano. Jeff was nominated by Ms. Hardery. Ms. Hardery says, "Overall, Jeff has seemed to transition well to the high school environment with his course requirements and being involved outside the classroom on the football team. Jeff comes to class with a positive attitude and is willing to participate while bringing his classmates together as a leader. Jeff cares for the well-being of others while striving to grow as an individual in both academic and social environment." Thank you, Jeff.
This is our tradition for the high school. Jeff, who'd you bring tonight? Who did you bring tonight?
That's my mom. My dad is in the Steelers jacket.
Mr. Romano is not going to get out of here alive. Alright, thanks for coming and supporting. Great captain.
Our next student is 10th grader Zaria Sims. Zaria was nominated by Mrs. Grummet. Mrs. Grummet writes, "I would like to nominate Zaria Sims. She has been working so hard all quarter long and has been putting in so much effort. She makes a point to come and see me for extra help whenever she is, whenever she can and is striving every day to do her very best. Plus, she is always polite and respectful and really makes my day better with her positive attitude." Thank you, Zaria.
Congratulations, Zaria. Who'd you bring to celebrate?
Both my parents and my godmother.
Congratulations.
Our next student is Mr. DeAndre Williams, 10th grader. He was recognized by Mrs. Komet. And Mrs. Komet wanted to recognize DeAndre. He is a pleasure to have in class. He works hard and goes above and beyond what is required of him in order to enhance his own learning. He is responsible, well-organized, respectful, and someone I can rely on in the classroom to lead by example. His work ethic has impressed me more than once. DeAndre is the kind of student that teachers wish they had a room full of." He couldn't make it this evening. Our next student is a junior, Mr. Avon Lardell. Avon was recognized by Ms. Forrester. She wanted to recognize Avon. Aside from being a studious young man in sociology, I observed him do something outside the classroom that requires a great moral fiber. Mr. Jones had unknowingly dropped $20 in the hallway at the end of the day. Avon picked it up and followed Mr. Jones to return it to him. Outstanding character. Thank you.
Who's here tonight with me?
My grandmother, a few parents.
Congratulations.
Our next student is Danielle Marable, 11th grader. Danielle is an incredibly sweet young lady. She is always very positive in class and works well with her peers. She completes every assignment with such thoughtfulness and spends time thinking about the strategies for learning that works best for her personal academic success.
Okay, Danielle, who'd you bring tonight?
I have my mom, my grandma, and my dad.
Congratulations. Okay, now it's my turn. 11th grader, let's see. Alright. Tonight, we honor Arthur Mays. Arthur, come on up. I went out of order. Arthur's our senior. Come on up. Arthur, here we go. Alright. Okay. Alright. So, this is, I'll say the teacher at the end, okay? "So I admire Arthur so much this school year. Every week, Arthur comes to me for clarification on his assignments during his study lab, requests extra help, does whatever he needs to do to be successful. His grades are now strong. In class, he's usually around a B, B-, which I think is phenomenal since it is a relatively challenging course, Anatomy and Physiology. In his other classes, he's earning B+ and A-, and he proudly showed me that. I am so impressed with his work ethic, dedication to his studies, and his overall mindset. He is a great example of what Tiger Strong is." Congratulations. Alright, Arthur, who'd you bring?
My mom and my dad over there.
My mom and dad. Congratulations. Tonight, John Sidlowski. Come on up, John. Our last student of the month. I'm going to tell you why. That was, by the way, Ms. Deuterriely for Arthur, okay? Alright, so John, this is an interesting story. So we received an email, myself, Mrs. Powers, Coach Lally, and it said, it was from an opposing soccer coach. "I just want to take a moment to thank the Twinsburg soccer community for tonight's match. The moment of silence, the black armbands, the show of unity, the fans in the stadium, the man of the match plaques, the game itself," sorry, Coach Lally, "were everything our players could possibly want in remembering Alec Cornet, especially his senior friends. It really shows the great people our student athletes are and will be in the future. Alec is a senior student that passed at Brush High School, an athlete, and he was remembered the night at Tiger Stadium." It says, "Not only should you be very proud that the Twinsburg team carried these athletes, these athletes carried themselves so well, and these young men that Coach Lally developed. In particular, I want to single out a special player for Twinsburg. I believe the player's name is John Sidlowski. After the match concluded, he made a point to come to me personally, shake my hand, and offer his deepest condolences for our loss of Alec. That heartfelt moment does not often occur after sporting events, but it is definitely one that I was thankful to be a part of and I will cherish as long as I live. I'm not sure if your school does any recognition of students, any special students of the month or athletes of the week, but I would like to personally nominate John for this type of recognition." And that's from Coach DiMatio, Mike DiMatio. I wish John continued success. Who'd you bring tonight?
I brought my dad, my beautiful mom, and it's my birthday today.
Oh my gosh, happy birthday! Maybe Mr. Romano can buy you a brown sweatshirt. These are our students of the month. Congratulations to our students. Awesome job. And our highlight for tonight, and I know some of you are talking about this, but the highlight for tonight is that our junior class will be taking what we call the Free ACT. So next Tuesday, our juniors have been offered the opportunity to sit for a full-length ACT test, free of charge, that's given to us by the Summit Education Initiative, and that's through the Akron Summit area. And basically, it's to just offer our students one more chance to sit before they take it for real in the spring, and it is free of charge. So to our juniors that have to sit for that test, Mr. Solan, Mr. Pacey for organizing everything, thank you so much. There it is, our students of the month and our highlight for tonight. Thank you. Oh, one last thing we just found out, actually confirmed this morning. Our THS Tiger Cheerleaders have been invited to a special event on Fox 8 next Wednesday, and they're going to be cheering on one of those activities throughout the evening hours on Fox 8. And basically, their activity is really a challenge around Thanksgiving time. So if you tune into Fox 8, you'll see from 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock, our THS Cheerleaders, so.
Mr. Curtis, that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you. So before we move on to committee reports, now would be the time, if there are families and parents who want to depart for more important things, now would be the time to do that. I really enjoyed your presence, and congratulations to all your students. Okay, so we'll move on to committee reports. Do we have any updates or reports to offer committees?
I just wanted to mention for the sports. I know last week, we had playoff games at our stadium, and I just wanted to give a shout out to our booster organizations. Our Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, as well as our Vocal Music Boosters, do a tremendous job, sorry, it's loud, do a tremendous job, whether it's fundraising at the stadium or at games. I know also last week, the Vocal Music Boosters did a large fundraiser for our music programs. So also PTA, I was able to help out at the daddy-daughter or the father-daughter dance, and it was just amazing how much work and time was put into it and how successful that turned out. So as I said, thank you to all of our support organizations, PTO or PTA, Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, Vocal Music Boosters. All of you do a tremendous job supporting our children, and we appreciate that. I also wanted to just kind of touch base on, also with our IT. I know I had some questions about the computers, and we're phasing those into our, excuse me, into our school district. And I will tell you, it's, I went to a session last year at the State Board of Education, and I don't think we always realize, and one of the things I was most nervous about, our kids having computers at their fingertips on a regular basis is, are they going to be safe? Are they going to be protected? So one of the things I know that Mrs. Powers has addressed is protecting our children from their personal information and the data. So that's really important, and Mrs. Powers has done a tremendous job explaining to us as a board that their information, from what I'm understanding, is going to be safe. In addition to that, I think we also forget sometimes, even on our own cell phones or our children's cell phones, the session that I went to talked about the different apps that children can put on their phone. And some of them are almost invisible. So it's important you know what your children have on their phone, who they're interacting with. Some of the predators out there take advantage of different apps and different things. So it's really important you know, and you can, your children can easily be a victim of, you know, people trying to get into their information. And just with that said, I will tell you that myself, my father's been very ill, and I've been spending a tremendous amount of time with him, and much to my announced, I didn't even realize it, but my own personal, some of my personal accounts had been logged into from Columbus. So it's important that you know what your personal, your passwords, make sure that you're not using the same passwords, because even us as adults can get hacked, or I know even last year, the city had some issues with personal information getting, you know, accessed. So it happens. It's important that you know and you're paying attention and that your passwords are safe and that you're paying attention to your children's accounts and your computers and things like that. So I just wanted to address that on a standpoint from, I had, you know, some own concerns with, like I said, the data protection that we have for our students. But on the other side of things, we need to make sure that we're protecting ourselves and making sure that our own information is protected. So, thank you.
Any other committee reports? Okay, then I will turn it over for the administrative report back to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Board of Education, from pre-K all the way through high school, we have specialized programs for our children. And in order to make things really work well, we have outstanding staff members who are supported by the Board of Education through your support of our programs. In addition to that, we have community organizations such as our Educational Service Center, such as Summit Education Initiative, who provide professional development and guidance to our staff. This evening, Ms. Rhonda Albers is going to present to you Keys to Success, but I've asked Ms. Villa to come forward just to give us a broad overview of some of the great things that are happening at Wilcox Primary School, and then she's going to introduce Ms. Albers, who will provide the presentation for you tonight. Good evening.
Thank you so much. Well, yes, there's always something fun happening at Wilcox. To focus on reading and early literacy, we have been working with our staff this year on looking at some of the things that happen before the children even get to kindergarten. We've been talking a lot about the 30 million word gap, and the teachers at our last professional development learned a strategy, tune in, talk more, and take turns. Going to the students where they are at that moment, if they're playing with the blocks, rather than calling a child over, to go to them and engage them where they are so they're not shifting their focus, that was one thing. Talk more, the 30 million word gap really points out how some adults are talking less to their children these days, especially because we're busy and we're working and we're trying to hustle and bustle. So sometimes, children are coming to school with this large gap in their vocabulary, which really affects them in literacy. And then take turns as to be giving the children those opportunities. So why that is relevant to what's going on with Key Steps to Reading Success is this is a program that involves parents in the education of their children and giving parents some tools to work with their children at home. And we have been doing this program, it's a partnership with the University of Akron Center for Literacy and Summit Education Initiative. This is our third year in the program, and we've been focusing on some of our students who are on reading improvement plans. And we're thrilled that this year, Mrs. Rhonda Albers has taken on this leadership role for our school. So she has been an intervention specialist with us and now a reading specialist the last few years. And in those roles, she really understands what goes into early literacy and then the key component that parents have in being a partner with us in helping the children. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Albers so she can tell you all about this program and what's going on with our Wilcox kids. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been a fun little program that
Thank you. This has been a fun little program that landed in my lap this year. I'd like to start by introducing you to one of my little friends.
Hello, my name's Cade.
Cade what?
Cade Nichols.
Cade Nichols, very good. What grade are you in?
For kindergarten.
Kindergarten. Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Sutton.
Who's your reading teacher?
Mrs. Albers.
Good job, okay. And what book did we read today? Can you hold that book? What's that called?
Llama Llama Red Pajama.
Good job. Okay, so I want to know, we're going to talk about the book, The Who, Where, What, and How. So who is in the story?
Mama Llama, Mama Llama Mommy.
Good job. And where is the story at?
In their house.
In their house, but where are they in their house?
In his bedroom.
In his bedroom, good job. What's the problem? Is there a problem?
Because he wanted his mom.
He wanted his mom. Why did he want his mom?
Because he was scared.
He was scared, good job. And how was the problem solved? What did they do? What happened?
Mama Mama got him free kisses.
Yep, and she gave him some kisses and told him, "Don't be sad," right?
Yeah.
And tucked him into bed. Okay, good job. Now, let's look at these words. I want you to tell me some of these words that are from the story. Okay, here's our first word. Can you tell it to me? Sound it out.
I don't know.
It's, it's.
Is.
His, good job. What about this one? Sorry, I'm going to show you that one. Okay. Sound it out.
One second, I need.
No, sit down. Sound it out for me, please. We're almost done. Look at your word.
Is.
Is, good job, buddy. Okay, here's this next one. Sorry, it's probably backwards on the video. What's this one, buddy? No, what's that? At. Good job, buddy. How about this word? Let's show them this one. Okay, what's this?
Red.
Red, good job. This one. Okay, what's this one, buddy? We're almost there. What's this one? Yeah? No, close. No, B-E, B-E.
B.
B. Good job. How about this one? What's that one, buddy?
A.
A, good job. Let's, got two more. Okay, here's this one. Okay, what's this one, bud?
Up.
Good job.
Up.
Up, good job, buddy. Okay, one more. This is our last one. Sorry, they're backwards.
O.
No. What's the first letter? O. No, W-O, it's not O. Remember what sound? What's the other sound that it makes?
T.
How about U?
U.
T, U.
Two.
Two, good job, buddy. Okay, can you say goodbye to everybody?
Bye, they miss you.
We have a lot of fun in reading. Learning to read can be really, really stressful for my little friends. Cade demonstrated part of last week's lesson from the Key Steps to Reading Program, Key Steps to Success in Reading Program, which was a focus on comprehension and sight words. The program was developed as a parent engagement program through Summit Education Initiative and the University of Akron Center for Literacy to help kids become fluent readers. The program began in 2015 with some researchers from each program wanting to develop something to help parents. By gathering, they have those three key points for this program. They know that families are influential, the most influential piece in helping their children at home. Families don't always know the best ways to help their children, and they don't always know which books to do. So we have a lot of parents wanting to do things, but not quite sure how to go about it. So with these two groups getting together, developed this program, which is specially designed for kids in kindergarten who are on a reading intervention, reading improvement monitoring plan. It's a 10-week program called the Key Steps to Reading Success, and it was piloted with Twinsburg Schools in 2016. Dr. Shelley Hauser and Mrs. Sarah Perro did this with the kindergarten program that year. Shelley Hauser is with the Center for Literacy. Sarah Perro is now teaching kindergarten full-time at Wilcox. She's moved on from reading intervention to a full-time classroom. The overview of the Key Steps program came from the National Early Literacy Panel, has several elements that they focus on that are highly predictive of reading success. These are four of them they've chosen to use. The skill of rhyming is provided in our 10-week program. It's focused on during Weeks Two and Four. The alphabet letter and letter sound knowledge is done with Weeks One, Three, and Five, but they don't do the whole alphabet at once. They do a chunk in One, a chunk in Three, and the last chunk in Five. Comprehension's addressed when the families talk with their children about the elements of fiction in the stories that the program provides, and they also give some structured panels in Weeks Four through 10. High-frequency sight words are done, are worked on for each book that we do in the 10-week program, and they also work on decodable words. These are pictures of the materials in Weeks One through Five. We've already completed doing these. We've done kindergarten ABC, and there's some pictures of the sight words, a little magnifying glass that they use to hunt for the sight words in the book, and an alphabet matching. The second week is Over in the Meadow by Ezra Jack Keats, and that one comes with sight words, as well as a Riving Go Fish game. The Dr. Seuss ABC, again, has alphabet letters to work with, along with more sight words. Llama Llama Red Pajama, which you saw with Cade, has some sight words, and then a guidance strip for the comprehension questions to help guide parents through what it means to do comprehension after reading a story. The fifth week that we just completed is Chicka Chicka Boom Boom. And Weeks Six through 10 are a series of targeted decodable books about a little dog named Biscuit. The first week focuses on short A-words, then we get into short U, short O, short E, and short I. Each of the little panels on the bottom are for guided comprehension that asks the question and gives parents ideas on how to respond to the questions. These are rhyming books, the alphabet books, and then these are, this is a sample of the Llama Llama Red Pajama comprehension questions. And I live these every day, so I forget, people don't live this. This has been a nice awakening tool for me to give to parents, and has inspired some ideas to go after the program is finished. SEI, when this was presented to me, asked me to not use this program with students in class. It is for parent, their research is looking at how the impact it has in the home. And I'm getting some great feedback from the kids and the parents. On October 11th, we invited 50 families to join this, to join us, and my little friend you met earlier is one of 35 that have chosen to participate in the program. The research we have such thus far is that, began in January 2016, 45 children at that time were on a RIMP, Reading Improvement Monitoring Plan at Wilcox. About half of the parents chose to participate. After the 10-week program, the final reading achievement outcomes showed that the students who participated in this, those on RIMP plans, had a 27% greater growth than those who didn't. This is the second year of the pilot, the second year of the pilot last year had nine schools in Summit County along, the first year was just Wilcox. Last year was nine schools. Data analyzed, and analyzed from five of the schools, had 177 students on RIMP plans, and it's a large enough population, they're starting to do breakdowns in the minority, non-minority subgroups on the progress that the students have had. And this has been, this shows to possibly be a tool to reduce some of the achievement gap for our minority students. This year, I have 35 students actively participating in it. I keep calling for those extra couple, hoping to drag a few more into it. It's been a lot of fun. The kids are enjoying it. And again, this is courtesy of the University of Akron, and then Summit Education Initiative, which is also doing the high schools, the high school test next week. So that is our Key Steps to Reading Success at Wilcox.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, one quick question? Is there anything coming from the tail end of preschool that might identify the students and get parents engaged in a program like this, maybe even six months earlier?
We, this is designed, first of all, for kindergarten.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, like, prior to kindergarten.
Prior to kindergarten, we are working with parents, and in our preschool, which is the largest feeder program into, the largest preschool program feeding into Wilcox, is our own preschool. We are using.
Well, I can share a little bit, our screening data from preschool has helped us identify.
Our screening data from the preschool has helped us to identify students even earlier that need some assistance.
Is that what I was thinking?
Yeah, and last year, we had a summer boot camp for some of those students. We had 20 of our students identified, our lowest students from the screening information, and got them a little, got them started in school. They came in six half-days right before school started, and that was a really nice program, and something we would like to continue and expand. So that was one thing. And then we do know that the kindergarten language screening, that's required by the state, has also been giving us some good information that when lower stain lines that the children are identified in, we're starting to see those trends. Mr. Assey and I have been watching that data year after year, and we're finding that those lower stain line students end up being our RIMP students. So we can find them, we're getting those pieces and parts that are helping us identify them a little bit sooner.
It seems to me like the, that the data does bear, you know, bear credence to the research. So this isn't news to me, but it's nice to know that, you know, we're doing some research-based practices and able to show, you know, the impact if we, you know, if we do it with fidelity, especially with Pearl, and the parent involvement piece is extremely significant. So it's good work, and we really appreciate, you know, being involved in this.
Thank you.
It's great you're getting parents involved too, because the more you expose the kids to the books and get the parents involved, then especially the four-kinder, and then the greater their vocabulary, and just engaging them in conversation, like you said, and maybe, you know, handing them a book more than like a tablet or a phone. And I think it's a great program, especially that it gets the parents directly involved with not just reading to the kids, but doing reading activities and finding those sight words, and I'm sure it makes it even more interesting to the kids when you give them a tool like a little magnifying glass or something, and it's just something a little bit different than just opening up the book and saying, "Okay, we're going to read." So I think it's a great program.
It does, and part of the, part, excuse me, part of the administration of this program is we ask the parents to do each of the activities three times during the week, and they record the day down and send it back. And I'm getting question, feedback from parents saying, "Well, the second or third time, they're reading the book back to me."
Yes.
Perfect. Because then they are able to recite a page, then they can go back and find a sight word on that page, not knowing that they can read it, but all of a sudden they can. That's also just building into the repetition and the longer-term memory, and then I can relate those, we can relate that skill into other things and transfer those into other books as they're continuing their practice in school.
Thank you.
We're just really delighted with all the efforts at Wilcox Primary School, and just a commercial here for Ms. Albers. She was our district's representative on the Summit County, All County Teaching Team, was celebrated just a couple of weeks back. So we thank you, Ms. Albers, for all that you do, and all the many ways that you support our kids every day at Wilcox Primary School. And again, the Summit Education Initiative is a tremendous partner for our school district. As Ms. Albers and Ms. Villa said, it's a cradle to Grade 12 initiative, and actually, they're doing career development too. But because of very generous donors, including the G.A.R. Foundation, they are able to fund things such as this program, as well as tomorrow's ACT test at Twinsburg High School. So we appreciate Mr. Darren Weimer, who is the Executive Director of the Summit Education Initiative, University of Akron, and of course, our staff that are just great partners with that organization, and providing a lot of unique learning opportunities, not only for our students, but support for our staff as well. Thank you, Ms. Villa and Ms. Albers. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Excuse me. Oh, my goodness. So we'll move on to Item G, which is remonstrance, public participation, what we call, what we like to call remonstrance here. Persons wishing to address the Board of Education should submit a blue card found in the lobby to the treasurer prior to the meeting, so that they can be recognized by the Board President and welcome to make comment. No formal action will be taken on subjects that are not included on this agenda until the Board has had an opportunity to study them. Comments regarding personnel must be submitted in writing through the Office of the Superintendent, and although there's normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at the Board meeting, if several people wishes to speak, which we do have, each person will be allotted five minutes. Now, based on the number of cards that I have here, what I want to, what I'm going to ask everyone who's asked to speak, to the extent possible, I want to make sure that we adhere to the 30-minute time limit. So I would ask that you, that you make your remarks brief, to the extent that you can, and as always, please be respectful. The first person, call it up, is Michael Turle.
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent, I almost said Councilman, Mayor, of course I've had it. I'm going to try and be as brief as possible to allow as many of the Fantone supporters here to speak. I'm coming before you with essentially a gift, yours for the taking of $2.5, $2.7 million. Most of you know that I have been active in trying to save Twinsburg Old School. Whether or not any of you folks are aware of it, there is a deed restriction on this property. The first page that you have is a copy of the deed that is on file in Summit County. On the front page, it shows where the transfer was made with a quitclaim deal for the price of $10. On the backside, highlights the deed restriction. As long as the building is owned by the grantee, it shall be used for public building. This building is no longer being used as a public building. At this point, that the city is no longer using this building as a public building, it is, I believe, the obligation of the School Board to reclaim this asset. This is on records. The next page, I believe, shows it listed as 2.7. I've seen another more current thing, 2.5. At that point, what's, you know, 200K between funds, you know. But it's worth approximately 2.5 to 2.7 million dollars. This is bondable assets that belong to the School Board at this point. Whatever the School Board decides to do with this building, should they decide to renovate it, should they decide to try to sell it, should they knock it down and sell their property, whatever profit comes from this building should return to the school district. We are talking two different taxing entities, which I'm sure you're all aware of. We have the city taxing entity, and we have the School Board taxing entity, which is responsible for four communities, not just the city of Twinsburg. So these funds should return to the school district if the city is not meeting their obligation as far as maintaining and using the building as a public building. The last page, should have printed out a copy for myself, if anybody could just, what's on, just show me, hold it up and it'll click into my mind. The last page is the asbestos report, yes, which was the big driving force in why this building had to be torn down. We've heard for years, "Oh, the asbestos, the asbestos." The asbestos is really not such a terrible issue as it was made out to be. I've read the report. It is contained behind the blackboards, not an issue, it is contained. It is contained under the floor tile, which is also covered by carpeting. It is in the caulking in the windows of the 1957 edition. The 1921 original building has already had the windows replaced. The caulking in the windows is not an issue unless somebody puts a grinder to it and makes that stuff dust and small particles flying through the air. The asbestos that is of immediate concern is in the insulation, in the plumbing insulation in the basement. And these can be done, as the city just found out, a lot cheaper than what originally anticipated. It is my belief that the school district is obligated, as I said, to reclaim this as bondable assets. It improves our power as a school district for receiving loans. It's a bondable asset. It is money in your pocket. And I spoke with a lawyer for our group, and he believes very highly in everything that I said, and is willing to take this case for you. It's a matter of filling out a little paperwork, and this is money in your pocket. I've had a number of people say that if you guys want to go back to the voters to try to pass a levy, it's to pass a levy, it's gonna be very hard-pressed when you're, i- i- if you throw away this two and a half million dollars. I mean, this is money. If you guys don't mind, I'll give you the ten bucks to take the building back and you can give it to me, and then I'll sell it for two hundred bucks to pay for my kids' pay for play next year. But this is something that our school board is responsible to the city of Twinsburg, school residents, to the Village of Reminderville school residents, to the Twinsburg Township school residents, and a lot of people forget there's a stretch of Macedonia that also comes to Twinsburg schools, along with some Hudson mailing addresses, but I believe they're Twinsburg Township. But these are funds that need to go into the school board's coffers. As Mr. Curtis said, I don't expect you to make a decision on this, but I would like you to review this before any decision is made with the city, because I know they were going to approach you on this. But it, it's money that belongs in the school district and kinda sounds like you guys need it right now, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up to speak is Paul Levine.
Good evening, School Board members, Superintendent Powers, fellow residents. I'm addressing the board of a concern over a member of behavior lately, Kathy Turle Waldron. Her most recent behavior on social media was to fat shame two people. She addressed Lisa Burnett, a parent in the school district, and I quote, "You should really get healthy and go on a diet." She also addressed another parent...
Mr. Curtis, point of order. I believe Mrs. Turle Waldron is a public employee.
Yes.
And it is being addressed, is against a remonstrance policy to, to, you know, personally attack.
I won't mention the ending. A school board member has also said, I would have to assume the parents had allowed, and speaking of a child of a, one of the residents, have to be morbidly obese through our entire childhood.
He's trying to defame me, and this has been addressed, this has been addressed already, and he's trying to defame me publicly, and I'm, I'm asking you, President, to please have him refrain. He's already mentioned my name, and, and as I mentioned earlier, there were some...
Mr. Levine, can you, you know, review what you...
I, I will, I will go on to, this was stuff that was done, that's fine, everybody does know what happened, but that's fine. I will actually talk about my issue. I was asked to talk by Mr. Burnett, by Ms. Burnett, as well as Mr. Burby, they were there to insult, but we'll go, it was just sad behavior, but that's unfortunately not the end of it. So, this is not defaming, this is something that's actually on record in the public school district that unfortunately I found out. But let me start with, a month or so back, there was an incident where a person harassed me in front of my two ten-year-olds in the presence of them at a football game. After five minutes of me politely asking this person to move away and leave me alone, I repeated him again, "Stop pushing my buttons," and continued to ask him to walk away. If I had all my kids with me, I would have walked away, but unfortunately, my middle daughter was not anywhere near, and I would have left on my own recognizance basically. Eventually, I became frustrated and angry, and I did use the F-word and told him loudly to walk the F-away, go the F-away. That would not, and he still would not leave, and I spoke louder until finally he left. I regret using this word and should have got my point across differently in retrospect. Ms. Turle, who is...
Mr. Levine.
I'm sorry, this, I, this is on public record, who I have no love lost for, no for me, reported this, she reported to Ms. Powers via text. Correctly, she reported, Ms. Powers, that I used the F-word, but that is where any truth and accuracy ends that is on public record. She reported in a text message that is now public record that I was screaming other profanities, and this is a quote, "And shouting sexual innuendos," and that was a quote, on public record, as anybody on the board would know. One hundred percent false, as well as saying I had a complete mental breakdown. That was also a quote. I never said any sexual innuendos, just the F-word, what I have admitted to, and never even said, "F you." Just walk the F-away, go the F-away. This was verified by a witness only five feet away, Lisa Zep Zawicki. More importantly, she also reported on public record, and I quote, "Mr. Levine was taken to court for killing an eight-year-old." She further stated she wanted to make sure that all was safe from Mr. Levine moving forward, and I quote. Lastly, she quoted, "There are some large red flags," in reference to Mr. Levine on public record. I want to address that. Sadly, I had an accident almost thirty years ago that resulted in the death of an eight-year-old. He was riding a bike, holding onto a bay door strap of a beer truck I was driving. He sadly lost his balance and was crushed to death. I was not cited, I was fully exonerated of any wrongdoing, but Ms. Turle, and I'm gonna try in my, making the, on public record, try to make him disappear criminal by intentionally leaving out this was an accident on the public record. Though I have spoke freely about this sad accident to a select few, I never discussed a civil suit that was filed. The only thing on public record I'm aware of, and someone would have to do a background check to obtain that info, I could only assume it was that school board to be named. This isn't even available on a Google search, and I tried for hours to find something. School board members should not be doing background checks on people who live in the community. Again, for an accident where a young man was killed. Her words, I use the word accident. To this day, I don't know how this was settled, because my company said they would contact me if needed. I assumed it was dismissed. I haven't heard from them in close to thirty years.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Can you wrap it up, please?
I will round it, I was...
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Her attempt to insinuate I killed a child criminally is, is sickening and irresponsible. Along with the comments of red flags saying I used sexual innuendos are fake, slanderous, and disgusting. Because Mrs. Turle and I, I am now reminded of the mental suffering, anguish, and sadness I struggled for, for years, and also the pain of the child's family went through.
She's been blaming several times tonight.
He's wrapped it up.
All, all of this reference resurfaced due to her actions, and besides defaming me, I can't know why this would be done. Her statements are slanderous, also puts my wife and children in potential harms way. Kids being teased at school because an accident was described in public record as a killing, and the father is red-flagged. I ask at this point, and I have to use this name, that Ms. Turle cease and desist any other comments that would be reverted to public record or action be followed to both her and the school district. Along with the fat shaming comments to Ms. Burnett and Mr. Burby, I request immediate suspension or expulsion from the board.
Mr. Curtis.
I thank you both, the board, for your time and quick action in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Lisa Levine.
I'm Lisa Levine, I'm Paul's wife, and I don't have anything written as he did, but it's ironic that personal information and safety are being spoken about tonight. These are things that were brought up about my husband that were not even brought up when we adopted our child from Guatemala, and we had to satisfy the FBI and background checks of two governments, of two countries. So, I'm not sure how this information was obtained. But thanks to these events, we have had to be, we were forced to tell our oldest child, not at our choice of time, because Twinsburg is a small town, and who else knows of this information besides what the select few people that we have allowed are closest to friends? Because this is not something, even though he was not guilty, this is not something that you go and tell everybody. He is not proud of this. But who else knows about this now? This was our choice to come forward tonight and say this, but it was not my choice to tell my oldest daughter about this in fear that she would find out another way at the high school. Now I have three younger children that I have to figure out how to tell. I just think it's very ironic that extremely malignant and vile actions were taken due to our, to our family. And I, I just don't understand why somebody would do that from thirty years ago. I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Linda Capelli Sladic.
Good evening. I stand before you tonight to explain how disgusted I am to see the double standard that has been going on in the school district. Just this week, the Twinsburg Bulletin chose to write an article about an alleged volunteer volleyball assistant and whether or not she was discriminated against because of affiliation with a religious Christian group. As part of this article, including information provided by our superintendent, it was stated that the reasoning behind her not being able to coach for our district is that she did not have the proper credentials or the background checks necessary. However, let's take a look at the current interim athletic director who is inside our Twinsburg High School, who we as parents know for a fact was not properly credentialed at the time that he started. He did not have his background checks taken, taken care of. As a matter of fact, he, not only does he not have the proper licenses prior to working for the high school, he told many district employees that the reason why he did not receive keys to the schools is because his background checks had not been completed. Are you kidding me? With an athletic director on paid leave for six weeks, with allegedly one of the reasons being that a person around our kids did not have background checks, which was proven false, and you all know it, and we all bring us to a substitute administrator into our school building without his background check being done first. Pretty much throws this argument out against Mr. Fantone when the school superintendent brought into the school an employee, not a volunteer, and no background to check completed. I do not believe a principal's license that this gentleman does hold does exclude him from the background check that needs to be completed and that, when he has contact with student and staff. This embarrassment needs to end. Our district has turned into a laughingstock in the surrounding communities, all because of personal agenda of one person. For six weeks, we have had to pay two additional people to be acting athletic directors while we have the best athletic director and student motivator sitting in his home yet for an unknown reason. If you have cause to terminate, I'm sure you would have done it by now, just as fast as you have cleared superintendent of any religious discrimination. For that reason, I feel I am sure others here have the same feeling that you do not have, have any cause to fire Mr. Fantone. Apparently, we have a surplus of funds to keep this escapade going in our school district. Therefore, when you come to us and tell us that you need to put a levy on the ballot, don't waste your time. Just keep your mouth closed, because you've shown us for the past six weeks just how you intend to spend our money. End this ridiculous fiasco and allow this district to start healing process, because I know it's gonna take quite a heck of a long time. Thank you. And Kathy, thank you for your time with the school board.
Thank you.
You have, you have been an advocate for our kids, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Gudinski.
John Gudinski, ninety-three seventy-nine Hyde Park Drive. First thing I'd like to do is to thank you for having my letter led, my letter read. Didn't even know, I thought, I thought speech, did you? Uh, no, uh, six weeks ago. I appreciate the fact that you allotted into the record. It is no secret that I am a supporter of Brian Fantone. I have supported him since ninth grade, as a student, as a player. He assisted me. As coach, I assisted him when he became a head coach. So, yeah, there's no secret there about my support of him. My comments tonight are directed to you as a board. I usually don't agree with Mr. Andrews on very much, but two weeks ago, he talked to you directly about how difficult it is to sit here and suffer the slings and arrows of outrageous fortune. But you signed up for it. You campaigned for it, and you said you would do it. Now it's seven weeks, and you haven't done a damn thing.
You'll have to excuse the, the language, if you would, please.
Well, I apologize.
Thank you.
As General Patton say, I don't do it just for the heck of it. But you need to understand the frustration that is out there when you don't have the truth. Now, I know several of you are members of the Rotary, and I'm gonna ask you to put it to the four-way test. Is it the truth? We don't know what the truth is as a community. And Mr. Curtis, you spoke long and hard about the process, and I appreciate that. I, I truly, truly do. As, as an employee, I would, I would want my privacy at all costs. But I also know that you have gone round and round at three different meetings and two different special meetings, and you failed to come up with anything. So, I, I need to ask you, with the social contract that you have signed with this community, you know, what is so egregious that keeps this man from his job? According to the police records, there's nothing criminal, there's nothing financial, and to my knowledge, there was no degree of public insubordination that anybody can find. And this is what these people are here for. Now, one of the tenants of the four-way speech, is it fair to all concerned? Obviously, this is not fair to a lot of different people on a lot of different levels. Okay? And, you know, as a teacher and coach, you try to be fair. I'm trying to be fair to the board. I don't want your job, that's why I didn't work for you. Okay? But it's not fair to our coaches. Darren Linbaugh? No? I assist as a golf coach. We're trying to put together a schedule for next year. We, we don't know who we're talking to. We don't even know where to house our equipment, because there's nobody there who knows. I talked to Mr. Schumacher today. He says, "John, I don't know where we put stuff." Okay? All right. Kids, kids have affinity to their coaches and leaders and everything else, and I understand that, and I get it. You know, you guys didn't necessarily hi- hire him for the kids. You hired him to represent the school district. Are we building better relationships? I wrote in my letter that I, I know people who don't want to come here, where as opposed to a long time ago, people were dying to get here. This was the place to be. And now we're not sure, and that's a shame. I know this, if I had a student who wasn't reaching his goals, the first thing I would do is I would identify what goals he wasn't reaching. I would inform somebody. I would remediate. I would extend the lesson, and then I would evaluate. And all you've done is extended his contract by three years. I do not see any logic in that whatsoever. If this was a problem, it didn't surface six weeks ago. If you have a new teacher and you know there's going to be problems, you put him in a two-year mentoring program. No? I, I am very concerned about the lack of decision-making, and I question, and I said in a meeting last spring, we don't know where we want this department to go. And right now, you don't have, you don't have a leader of the department. If that's my time?
Yes.
Again, I thank you for your service. I appreciate how difficult the job is, but it is your job, not anybody else's, to make this decision. And I certainly wish that you would make it soon.
Thank you. Brandon Bucknell. Okay. Whitney Daly.
Whitney Daly, four one nine five Morley Drive. Good evening, everyone. Last Sunday night, our community was rocked by a microburst that wreaked havoc on Twinsburg. Some had property damage, some were trapped in their own neighborhoods, and nearly all of us were left without power. Immediately, my husband and I went into survival mode, finding a solution to the dark, the cold, the food that would spoil in the fridge, the lack of hot water, childcare while school was out, and on and on. All the while, trying to make it seem like a fun adventure for our kids and keep up with work responsibilities. When the power came on fifty-some hours later, it felt like a huge weight had been lifted off of me. In fact, one of my boys asked why I seemed so nervous when the lights came back on. Reflecting back, I think it was because I was afraid... Reflecting back, I think it was because I was afraid they would go off again, leaving me powerless in so many ways. This short stint without power was stressful, and I know that I wasn't my best self during this time. But I wasn't aware of the weight I was carrying until the situation was resolved. I bring this up because our entire community, and especially the Fantone family, are carrying a huge weight as we ramble around in the dark, unable to be our best selves for our children and for each other, as we wait for you all to restore power to our community. And the effects of this will be long-lasting, financially devastating, and span generations. And the longer this persists, the more damaging it will be to the community. After speaking at the meeting two weeks ago, I have been stopped countless times by people throughout the city, some of whom I didn't even know, thanking me for speaking up. Many didn't even feel comfortable to speak without using code, because they were afraid of the consequences that may result if they were expressing discontent. When the power is out, you open the fridge sparingly, cautiously and quickly, hoping that your actions will allow you to eat, but also knowing that the loss of cold air could cause all the food to spoil. When there is no power, your children may eat, but chances are, it won't be the well-balanced meal that you hoped for them. When people are afraid to speak in our community and dialogue occurs sparingly, cautiously and quickly, what type of education are our children receiving? In the absence of Mr. Fantone as the A.D., the community is in survival mode, trying to cover for the many, many things that he accomplished each day. Although I am not personally connected to Twinsburg High School at this point, I teach and have administrative duties at another high school. Covering for any faculty or staff member for an extended period of time can be challenging and exhausting, but the A.D. is a cog and vital to so much of what happens in a school. A sub is brought in to sustain, not to build. Even with a sub, the burden that falls on the rest of the community is immense. When the pressure builds and the community goes into survival mode, what type of education are our children receiving? Kids are affected. Before the microburst, the last time I had been without power for an extended period of time was when I was about ten years old, and we lost power in my community in Alaska. Two and a half decades later, I remember being afraid that we would run out of well water to flush the toilets, or that our house would reach a temperature where the pipes might freeze. Our kids are living this, too. In the last meeting, a young man brilliantly articulated what Mr. Fantone's absence meant for his high school athletic experience. Students feel Mr. Fantone's absence very palpably, but they also see what is happening in our community. My six-year-old sensed my anxiety before I was even aware of it. I teach seventeen-year-olds. They know. Additionally, although all are affected by this event, some are devastated by it. For example, we lost power, but a family friend lost his home when it was crushed by a tree. I have been disappointed, disheartened, and burdened by the situation, but the injustices that the Fantone family has endured are inexcusable. At the heart of all this is a man and his family, who not only work in the school district, but also own a home here and send their children to our schools every day. We are six weeks into this. For six weeks, the Fantone family has been powerless and in the dark. For six weeks, the family has received almost no communication. They have been left waiting anxiously for B.O.E. minutes to be posted, only a few hours before the meetings, in hopes that they will get a glimpse of what the future holds. For six weeks, they have had their name and reputation tarnished by rumors and misinformation. For six weeks, they have been trapped in their own community. Mr. Fantone has to ask permission to go watch his oldest son play in a rec league basketball game at the elementary school, and has to get permission to attend his son's school's music concerts. He has been completely prohibited from being, I'm almost done.
Okay, thank you.
From being anywhere on school district property for the last six weeks, even though he is not being investigated for anything criminal or inappropriate that would involve police investigation. Mr. Fantone cannot drop his children off at sports practices, because he is unable to step foot on school grounds without permission. During my journey with the Fantone family these past six weeks, the two most heartbreaking things I've experienced are standing speechless as Kara, his wife, at her side as she grappled with how to tell her boys that they can't go to Twinsburg sporting events, and seeing the devastation in Brian's eyes when I picked the boys up to go trick-or-treating. The only thing these kids love more than Cleveland Indians are the Twinsburg Tigers. Trying to explain the complicated situation with Brian has been challenging, but having part of their identity as ball boys and Tiger fans taken away is personal for these young kids. Additionally, on Halloween, the two oldest trick-or-treated with my family, because Kara was sick in bed and Brian didn't feel comfortable being out in the community in such a public way. On Halloween, Kara and Brian got pictures of their kids trick-or-treating. We all have been affected by this storm, but the Fantones have been devastated, and yet, they keep persevering and standing as model of integrity, as they always have. For weeks, the community has been crying out for answers and an end to this dark, cold situation in which our children are being educated. I understand that the legal process can be slow and painful. My husband is a lawyer. But I also know that the longer this goes on, the less integrity you and the process have, and the more devastating it will be for the entire community financially, emotionally, and educationally. Just think Puerto Rico. You were most likely without power last week. It's not good for anyone. It has already made a lasting impression on the community, young and old. How many more lives are you willing to hinder? How damaging are you willing to let this be to the community? How long are you willing to let this go until a just solution is reached? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes remonstrance, and I do want to say that we appreciate your willingness to come up and speak. We also appreciate your words. That concludes remonstrance, and we do appreciate you coming to speak. We're going to move on to the business portion of our meeting, which is Item H, which is the Treasurer's Report. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes: Special Meeting of October 30th, 2017, and Regular Meeting of November 1st, 2017, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Do I have a motion for H1?
So.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solura. Discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Turrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. H1 passes five zero. Moving on to action items. Item I, action items and personnel. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read Items I, I-1 through III as consent agenda. I, I1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated, licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background check. II, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And III, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Do I have a motion for Items I, I-1 through III?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Felber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solura. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Turrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And I, I-1 through III passes five zero. Moving on to action items. Items J, without objection from my colleagues, I will read Items J-1 through IV as consent agenda. J-1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listings of media center items to be deleted from inventory, per the attached exhibit. II, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the below list of items to be deleted from inventory. There are paper shredders there for your perusal. III, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of school office supplies valued at $300 from Mark Patrick's at 10124 Andover Drive, Twinsburg, for Samuel Bissell Elementary School, per the attached exhibit. And IV, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of Wicgle seats valued at $47.11 from Carrie and David Andrews, 3161 Neil Lane, Twinsburg, for Samuel Bissell Elementary School, per the attached exhibit. Do I have a motion to accept Items J-1 through IV?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. I would like to thank Mark Patrick, Pat, yeah, Patrick, for the $300 donation of office supplies for Bissell, and also the donation from the Andrews for the Wicgle seats for Samuel L. Bissell. We always appreciate any and all items donated to our schools for the betterment of our students. Any other comments relative to action items? Okay. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Turrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Passes five zero. Next on the agenda is miscellaneous. Do we have any comments or any information offering from miscellaneous?
Real fast, Mr. Holland spoke about it earlier, but I just wanted to thank everybody who helped the father-daughter dance. This was the third one in a row that I've been to, so I've been to all three. They get better every year. Looking forward to two more. So, you know, I appreciate it. It's a lot of hard work. The girls had a great time, and it's great to see the fathers come out and the fathers spend time with their daughters. You know, they were all dancing, and it was a good time. So, I personally appreciate it. I know everybody that I went with appreciates all the hard work and effort, you know, from the staff, as well as the PTA, who spends quite a bit of time doing that. So, I definitely appreciate that. I also want to thank a few people had a chance to go to some Veterans Day programs, went to the Chamberlain Concert. That was a great showing by the band, who we may have to address Mr. Welker at a larger stage, if the band gets any bigger. The orchestra and the RBC chorus did a great job. Couple of student speakers who shared some very heartwarming stories. So, appreciate Chamberlain and everything that they do for that, as well as Wilcox, Veterans Day luncheon. This was the seventh one I've been to, I think. And it gets bigger every year. I think 152 or so were this year. Special thanks to my wife, who helped co-chair it for the second year in a row, Ms. Browning, Mr. Scolero, Mrs. Wozniak, Mrs. Proczynski, Mr. Asti, and all the staff there, as well as the grant that was received from, I believe, NEOEA to help provide free lunches for everybody. And it's amazing to sit there and talk with people. And I was actually reunited with somebody that I served with thirteen years ago, that I haven't seen in seven years, who came up from Washington, D.C. to be with his nephew. And unbeknownst to me, I walked in the door and I saw him. So, that was a special thing to see that. And, you know, without the efforts, you know, of PTA, you know, staff going above and beyond, you know, things like that, you know, you really reach out to a whole bunch of people when you do that. And I can tell you that it's more appreciated than you'll ever know, and I thank you for that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chris.
Any other comments on miscellaneous?
Yes, I do have two things. I do want to address two things this evening. So, I did receive an email on September 29th, and because this was addressed this evening, I am going to go ahead and read this email, so it's on the record. Says, "Dear Twinsburg City School Board and whom this may concern, on September 28th, during the high school football game, I was standing along the fence, watching the game with my son and his friend. Just before the start of the fourth quarter, the band was coming to take their place, as usual, to perform for the stands. Behind me, I could hear someone in the stands yell," and I will not use, it says, "F you, don't push my buttons," and there's a name. "With the next part, something about being a pedophile. I turned to see," I will not name this person, "standing at the bottom of the stand, speaking calmly to another individual, asking him what his problem was. This individual continued to throw insults, calling him trash, and continually using obscenities. I told my son to ignore it, as he asked what was going on. Unfortunately, this is not the place, especially in front of kids, for this conversation. Individual walked away. The other individual continued with what I would consider a temper tantrum about the incident before leaving. I understand individual and some members of our community don't see eye to eye. However, a high school football game is not the place to discuss your animosity towards another person. This was unacceptable behavior by so-and-so, and I entrust proper attention will be taken towards this matter. And this was sent to us by a community member, not one of the individuals." So, as Board of Education members, and as a parent, my expectation is, is that when we have spectators at events, whether they're parents, whether they're grandparents, that their behavior is appropriate. When that behavior is not appropriate, as in my opinion, it was not in that evening, I did address it with our superintendent. From that point forward, our superintendent did handle the situation. Our job is to make sure that our children are safe, and as Mrs. Powers, excuse me, on a regular basis states, warm, safe, and dry. And if we have adults in our community screaming profanities in front of the children, I will tell you, yes, I will take issue with that, absolutely, by all means, and I will address it with our superintendent. For anybody to think that it's not appropriate for me to address that situation, I'm sorry. Well, I'm not sorry. I will address it all day long. So, for me, shouting profanities at a football game is not appropriate behavior for any adult at any time. Thank you.
Any other comments from miscellaneous?
On another note, not really related to schools, but it will involve some of our children and families. Some of you or some of your kids may have been in some of the productions of Twinsburg Youth Theater or Community Theater. It used to be Youth Theater, but now it's Twinsburg Community Theater. They're going to be having their production of Willy Wonka coming up in a few months. They're getting their practices underway, and in January, they'll be doing the production. So, you'll see some of your students, you'll see some of their parents and family members involved in this play. And this was the first play my daughter was in, maybe ten years ago. So, like I said, not really a plug for the schools, because it's not a school-sponsored event, but it does involve our students and their families, and I'm looking forward to that. And I understand they're looking for volunteers, and it's always fun to do that. So, just a plug for the theater.
Thanks. And I'll wrap up comments. I had an opportunity to attend the last football game, and I think there was a presentation that Chad gave, or maybe it was a booster organization, that they were talking about the T-shirt launcher. And at that time, I made comments that, you know, I love the fact that, you know, the T-shirts are launched into the stands, and, you know, it gets everybody going. And I'm always kind of reaching up there, hoping that, you know, I get a T-shirt, and I never had not gotten one. Lo and behold, the last game, I'm in the stands, got my umbrella up, because it was raining, and I hear this big thud hit my umbrella. And I look down, and there was a T-shirt. So, I got my T-shirt. Thank you, Chad. I don't know if you were aiming for me, because I was not standing up waving my hands, but I did get my T-shirt, and I'm like over the moon. So, appreciate it. And the wind was great, too. So, that just made it all good. So, appreciate that. That's my miscellaneous. Okay. Next is executive session, and we do have a need for executive session, so that the Twinsburg Board of Education will enter into executive session at 8:51 to discuss discipline of a student and the employment, discipline, and compensation of public employees, as per Board of Education Policy 011, I mean, excuse me, 0166A. I will make the motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Turrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Five oh, we will enter into executive session. I do now anticipate that we will reconvene. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting.